Good evening and welcome back to the council meeting for September 8th that began at 5:01. We had an in-camera discussion on an item that dealt with FOIP. And at this point, we've come back into the regular meeting. Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to move the council direct Boydin to proceed with the reference checks on the chosen preferred candidate, sorry, on the preferred candidate.
Thank you for that motion. And Kara, I'm gonna have to turn to you. At this point, we have staff in and we cannot have discussion any further on this, can we? Okay. But normally, we allow discussion after a motion. Okay?
I would call the question.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the response from administration. Is debate allowed on something like this?
Do you, Mr. Mayor, this is a public meeting at this time. They are allowed to be here.
Okay, so debate is allowed then, you're saying? Okay.
I would, I would just caution council about what exactly you debate, especially because this is the public portion.
Yes, exactly. Okay.
So that's why I called the question, your worship.
You called the question. Okay. I will call the vote. All in favor of the motion put forward by Counselor Peterson? And opposed? The motion is carried three to two. Four to one, sorry. And? Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, your worship. I have a motion. I move that provided the reference checks are satisfactory, council directs the CAO to provide the preferred candidate with an offer letter based on the compensation package presented, subject to council's approval and review of the reference checks.
Thank you for the motion. Deputy Mayor Cox?
Your worship, I thought we were not moving ahead with this one. I thought that...
I think we were just talking with Mr. Legore in camera.
We were waiting until we had the references to discuss that then.
I believe we were just talking in camera and we agreed that one would go before two. Number one would occur before number two.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, because that's why we've added the subject two on the number two recommendation. So it will come back to council with all the information.
So we have a motion on the floor?
Your worship.
Counselor Montgomery?
So in order to determine if the reference checks are satisfactory, will we have to vote on that?
I believe the motion does talk about if the reference checks are suitable.
I know. I'm wondering about the process for determining if council thinks that they're satisfactory or not. Is that done by vote?
See you, Mr. Mayor. It will have to be done by vote because it says subject to council's review and approval. And that requires a vote of council. Thank you.
Thank you. Were you able to hear that, Counsel Montgomery?
I was. So as far as this motion goes, I think that it's unnecessary. If we have to vote anyways, whether or not the reference checks are satisfactory, at that point, we'll obviously be able to make this current motion. It doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to make a motion that's contingent on another future motion when that motion could be made at some point in the future. So I... Yeah, that's my take on this, I guess. Thank you.
I think the, I think the number two motion talks about directing the CAO to provide an offer letter. And the first one just...
Right. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, I was just saying that I think the second one is a little more specific because it talks about an offer letter and the approval of council.
Right. So my understanding would be if we're having to vote on whether we, you know, accept or are satisfied with the references, at that time, we can make a motion as well to make the offer, to pass along the offer letter, I believe. I think, I think we should, I think we should wait until we've actually seen the references or we've, you know, conducted the reference checks before we make a motion to offer a letter that's contingent on us accepting it anyways. It's a... It's kind of preloading expectations, I guess. Anyways, thank you.
Counselor Peterson? Counselor Bauer?
Your worship, thank you. I do understand where Counsel Montgomery is coming from. I think that, you know, the number one thing that we have, some of us on council have felt is that we want to be very deliberate and make sure that we are slowing down the process so that we are all comfortable with this decision along the way. If that means withdrawing this motion, because the next logical step after council directs Boydin to proceed with the reference checks would be that Boydin would present those reference checks to us, then I am comfortable withdrawing my motion, Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you. Counselor, Mr. Legore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize that I'm raising this in public session. This was discussed in camera. We need to pass the second motion if the candidate is gonna give permission for reference checks to be made. He wants to protect his current employment and he will only proceed with reference checks if council is agreeable to the compensation package. Thank you.
I do remember that, obviously, from our discussion points earlier.
Thank you, CAO Legore, for clarifying that. I had forgotten that as well.
Can we call the question, your worship?
Yes. So the motion is still on the floor then? Or do you have?
Could I, could the motion be repeated, your worship?
Yes. I believe we can have that done. Counselor Bauer?
I can read it. Is that okay, Ms. Rusk? I move that provided that the reference checks are satisfactory, council directs the CAO to provide the preferred candidate with an offer letter based on the compensation package presented, subject to council's approval and review of the reference checks.
Thank you.
Thank you. The question has been called, so I will call the question. All in favor? And opposed? So we have four to two. Thank you very much, council. And now, we go into the other part of our meeting. And Mr. Legore, are you leading us in on that?
And I will be departing, your worship.
Yes, thank you very much for checking back in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Legore, who will be leading off the start of this? Mr. Tedi, you're coming forward?
Mr. Tedi will be Mr. Mayor, and I just want to thank all the management people that are in the room for their work over the past few months on this and very much appreciate it for everyone's support. Thank you. They put a lot of hours into this.
Good evening, Mr. Tedi, and welcome.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Before we proceed, we need to move into committee of the whole.
All right, thank you very much. So we need a motion to go into committee of the whole?
Your worship, I would move that we go into committee of the whole at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor? And the motion, Counsel Montgomery, can you say aye or nay? Counsel Montgomery, are you still with us?
Did I freeze?
Yes.
Hello?
Yeah, you're back now. Are you in favor?
Sorry, I raised my hand, but I approve of going into committee of the whole as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tedi, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. And thank you to council for your participation this evening. We want to recognize, I also want to recognize and thank the directors and finance staff and managers for their participation in order to get to this point. If we could have the next slide? Thank you. This timeline gives the next steps. We have the presentation today and we are suggesting we are seeking council's recommendation to the new council for adoption of this corporate plan. Then in November, we have the new, we will be presenting the new council with this plan. So the long-term financial plan is to provide the financial resources needed to deliver the services within council's strategic plan and provide adequate resources to meet both the emergent and traditional needs of the town, to provide resiliency after emergent or unexpected events, and to leverage opportunities as they arise. So the financial plan is kind of like a little journey, or a major journey, if you want. And there's a picture of a road there. And if we deviate off of our financial plan a long ways, you can see what might happen. It's not meant to be a threat or anything like that, but it's just kind of reality. If we don't stick to the plan, we could have some issues. So in order to navigate the journey of financial sustainability, the long-term financial plan needs to provide flexibility, be responsive to financial policies, allow for opportunities in changing circumstances. We need to balance service levels and make sure they're equitable and appropriate, provide governance, maintain integrity, and credibility with the public. Financial resources are created over a period of time. They just don't happen overnight. So the objective of the 22 financial plan is to continue to provide reserves and the resources to meet unforeseen events. And what I'm really talking about is capital assets from 2017 to 2020 utilized reserves and unallocated surplus. At the end of 2020, we had 638,000 remaining in our unallocated surplus and financial stabilization at the end of that year, which is a very, very low amount. We had reserves, yes, but reserves are earmarked for specific purposes. And we had that very minor balance. So reserves come from intentional budget transfers to reserves. They also come from operating surpluses. The long-term financial plan strengthens the town's commitment to align resources to meet future council's strategic operating plan and capital programs. And so with that, we're gonna talk about the 2022 operating and capital budget. We invite council to, if you have questions, to retain them during the presentation and then we will do our best to answer your questions during the discussion period at the conclusion of this presentation. Thank you. One more slide. The service levels that we've been maintaining and we'll be talking about enhancements of two or three specific things during this presentation necessitates a 3.9% residential tax increase and a 5.9% non-residential tax increase. In addition, we anticipate increasing the utility fees by 2% to maintain full recovery of the utility expenses. We also anticipate recreation returning to the pre-COVID income levels. And with today's earlier meeting, Wheatland County is contributing towards the operating of the recreation facility. So that's a major enhancement.
So on this slide, as you can see, we have presented a balanced budget. The balanced budget includes revenues, less expenses, and other funding uses, so principal payments and transfers to and from reserves. For 2022, general revenue consists mainly of taxes, which support the majority of our departments. The utilities department is self-funding. Here's our revenue slide. We have a projected increase of 4% to total budgeted revenues. Total revenue is 32 million. Taxes are budgeted to increase by 3.9 and 5.9 for residential and non-residential taxes, respectively, as Mel mentioned. This increase will cost the average home of 350,000 approximately $10.43 per month, or two Starbucks coffees per month, depending on what side you get. Utilities are increasing 2%, which would cost the homeowner with an average bill of $150 per month an extra $3 per month. The total cost of the increases to the average homeowner per month is $13.43. We anticipate recreation revenues to return to pre-COVID levels. In the 2021 budget, we reduced it by 25%, and in 2022, we increased it back up to pre-COVID levels of, so 25%. Our expenses, our projected expenses are going to increase approximately 4%. Total expenses are 36 million. Salary increases account for 643,000 out of the total expense increase of 1.3 million. Total FTEs increased by 4.25 compared to the 2021 budget. The 2022 budget includes a cost of living increase of 2.5% beginning July 1st, 2022. We also anticipate benefit expenses to go up to maintain existing benefit levels and have included it in the 2022 budget. Contracted and general services decreased in 2022 compared to 2021. We included a cost recovery from Wheatland County to pay for the residents' use of AREC facilities. This offset the increase in the RCMP contract of 200,000. Emergency services also decreased due to the expected recovery from the COVID pandemic. Amortization also increased 858,000. This is due to asset additions and anticipated projects. This is a non-cash charge that is added back to balance the budget. Doug, if you'd like to speak to the FTE equivalent summary?
So, Mr. Mayor and council, our FTEs in 2021 were 130.98, and in 2022, we're gonna be at 135.25. And if there's any questions in that, we're prepared to answer them at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Our 2022 debt is expected to be 23 million. At the close of 2022, we anticipate our debt balance to be 23 million, which is 48% of the provincial debt limit and 95% of the town's debt limit. In 2022, we anticipate borrowing 3.6 million. However, we expect to make 2.3 million in debt payments. The 2022 principal payments on our debt are expected to increase by 165,000 compared to 2021. So with our next focus areas, the directors will be speaking to each of their separate areas.
So, good evening, your worship, and members of council. So I'm excited to be before you tonight to talk about our focus areas for the next year under Strategic and Administrative Services. So for Legislative Services, one of the key areas that we've identified going in for the new council is to streamline the council agenda report formats and to deliver training to staff. From my perspective, in the short time I have been here, it is definitely something that has been, that has come to light in terms of the information that I think is sometimes lacking in some of the reports that come to council. Currently, there are eight different templates. We can certainly streamline that down, and so that's what we're looking to do with that initiative. One of the other things that has come to the forefront is the bylaw and policy review that needs to be undertaken. So we have a number of outdated policy documents, and there are also a number of policy gaps. So in terms of, in order to address that organizationally, we need to make sure that staff have the proper training and tools to understand how to draft bylaws, policies, and to do that review on an ongoing basis. So that's just really building that capacity within the organization. One of the things that's already underway is scanning the bylaws and loading them into our M-file system, so that will just continue for a lot of our historic bylaws. So we will just try and get that finished. From IT and GIS, we did have a report done by RICO that identified a number of areas that need to be, need some work. And so really, this is speaking to that. So in terms of developing the multi-year strategic plan, is really implementing those recommendations and making sure that we do the follow-through that's required. That also aligns with the next two initiatives. So in terms of upgrades to security and the phone system is also completely in alignment with that report. In terms of a business continuity plan, so most municipalities are, have developed a business continuity plan, and basically, it's how you would deliver services in the event of an emergency or, you know, any other kind of thing. So we, it's something that organizationally we should have. And so we have, we put some dollars in there to start developing that as an organization. The last one under IT and GIS is EPCOR and GIS, a partnership to allow EPCOR with some access in terms of monitoring information regarding the deep utilities. Moving into communications, marketing, and act dev, one of the key areas that we have addressed, and we hope that you will agree, is that our website needs some work. It is, it's not a user-friendly experience. It's hard to find information. So we do hope that you will support us with that initiative. We also are looking for, working on making sure that our messaging aligns with our 2021 rebranding that we just rolled out, right? So there's gonna be further work that needs to come in terms of fully implementing that across the organization and the town. We put on a number of spectacular events. I mean, I'm really, really proud of my team and all the events and things that they've not only pulled off, but pulled off during COVID. And so this initiative is to continue to enhance those events and to look for new opportunities as well, because we know that events create vibrancy and are part of, you know, what attract and retain residents, businesses, all of those things. And so they have a really strong, strong benefit to the community. One of the other things is we really are looking at some partnerships for those events. It's not sustainable for the town to retain planning, delivering all of the events, especially as we want to build our capacity and build on the events that we do deliver. We're gonna be looking for partnerships. And so that's one of the initiatives as well, is to kind of explore that and to shift where we can. Also then, you've seen the short-term economic development strategy, moving into more of those mid- and long-term strategies in terms of business engagement and other targeted initiatives. From a records management and FOIP perspective, we would like to undertake a records audit, and that is something that's going to be done in-house. It's just something that will kind of allow us to know where are some of our gaps, so then again, we can build a plan moving forward in terms of how we can we can enhance records management. What I will say is, we have one of the best records management staff programs that I have seen in municipal government. I really think actually that we could be a leader that other communities could look to in terms of how to do record management and do it well. So that's one of the things, looking for, obviously, efficiencies in terms of releasing information as well. So tied to the website piece is right now, it's a very manual process every time we have to upload bylaws policies, so looking to kind of automate that process. It's also a very manual process right now in terms of how we deal with the destruction of documents when they've, you know, met retention and we don't need to keep them anymore. So looking to automate that process as well. One of the other things from a FOIP perspective is we do have a number of cameras in town, and so really, we should have a surveillance policy. And so again, this is, this is just a gap that I want to bring forward, so it's something that we've put on our radar. And then the other thing is the personal information bank. So while we do have one for the town of Strathmore, it is quite dated and back from when the community was much smaller. And so we'd like to, like to modernize that and make sure that it's accurate. It is a requirement under the Act, so we just want to make sure that we're keeping everything above board. And then last but not least, we have our HR team. And so we are looking to introduce a job costing module with our Great Plains software. So this is to allow for better project tracking in terms of staff time and to just better be able to really understand costs associated with the different projects. Continuing to digitize employee files, so it's something that we're already undertaking. Just realizing that, you know, efficiencies can be realized when you don't have to go and find records and things like that, just to have them kind of at your fingertips. So something we're gonna continue to do. Looking at redefining the recruitment process and employee orientation. So while I do think it's great that we have an orientation, we're looking to just enhance that, right? And to really make sure that when we bring staff onboard, they have all the tools, support, everything they need to be successful in our organization. Also looking at a leadership development program. So we have a number of new managers in this organization, and so looking to also really make sure that they have the training, the knowledge, and the, you know, competencies, expectations about, you know, what does leadership look like for the town of Strathmore? You know, where do we want to go from that perspective? So we want to develop a program that would be rolled out to all leaders within the organization. The compensation review and benefit contract renewal. So these are pretty standard items. Every three to four years, every community looks at them, renews them, goes out to market. These are, these are pretty standard, but it's something that is on our radar that we do need to do. And then kind of the last one is around just further support for our health and safety management system. So we are going for our core this year. So we, you know, we do anticipate that there will be additional follow-up actions coming out of that in terms of other areas where we can focus to just increase our score kind of going forward.
So I'm gonna speak about the corporate service focus area with finance. So our overall arching goal is to improve financial reporting to council and senior leadership. We want to improve and update my Strathmore, so the virtual city hall. We're not using this software to its utmost ability. So we're going to update that and make it more user-friendly for all the customers. We're gonna update our chart of accounts. We want to improve the budget process by providing more training. We want to review our financial policies to assess any needed updates and communicate the need and importance of healthy reserve balances to everyone. For utilities, we want to increase efficiency by improving our utility software. So one area that we're looking at is to put out a customer portal, which will allow customers to access their water usage on a daily basis. By giving customers access to this portal and their usage, they'll be able to water their lawns and see how much water that they've used, so it's not a surprise at the end of the month. And we're hoping this will help promote water conservation. We want to work with the communications group to improve usability of the utility section of the town website, so people can find the information they need on utilities quickly. And we want to start exploring some more water conservation initiatives.
In terms of community and protective service focus areas, a lot of our areas were decimated by COVID. Our recreation programs and services, namely. So we're looking to reestablish those recreation services to the community. One facility that was significantly impacted for two years was the Strathmore Motor Products Sports Center. We've started to expand our services and programs that we're offering there. And in conjunction with that facility and all the others, we hope to realign the services and programs to the Recreation and Culture Master Plan that was adopted by council in January 2020. that was adopted by council in January 2020. From the Protective Services Department, municipal enforcement looks to enhance the public presence in the community and build relationships. Obviously, the RCMP could be a pressure point, but their focus will be on reducing property crimes, enhancing road safety, and building maintained positive relationships within the community. Our fire services, fire prevention programs and other community engagements will look to be reestablished and obviously continue in that aspect. And emergency management that has been put on hold, but we'll look to having regional participation with Wheatland Management as well as a management agreement with Six Sika. And finally, from the FCSS team, they're going to focus on client service delivery, community wellness, elder abuse prevention, housing instability, homelessness, indigenous engagement, which we know is paramount, youth services, and other poverty reduction initiatives.
So within the infrastructure operations, development services areas have a number of focuses, things we're going to work on in 2022. Within parks, we're looking at improving landscaping in the cemetery, cleaning up the rose garden area, and consider implementing a new cemetery bylaw. We're going to create a public tree database and develop an action plan for weed control in our parks and green spaces, and as well as implement findings from the manpower assessment to maintain current park standards. Within planning and development, of course, we're going to complete the municipal development plan, which we are working on right now, but will complete in 2022. We'll focus on providing timely support and customer service to the public and the development industry as we do now. Within operations, we're going to research the cost-benefit of paving some of our alleys, as well as undertake sidewalk repairs and replacements from the sidewalk assessment completed in 2019. Within the infrastructure area, we're looking at completion of the Westridge Road product, project, rather. We're going to continue utility replacements in communities that are most in need, continue to implement the pathway improvement program, continue to deliver the trash-to-treasure program and changes to the HIG service, implement seasonal compost collection changes, and then finally pave the parking lot in South Kinsman Park. Thank you.
So last year, Mr. Mayor, when we approved the budget, we had reduced substantial positions. And the question was asked of me, do you think we can continue to deliver services at the same level? And I believe it was Councilor Sobel that asked that question. And I felt confident that we did. And with the onset of COVID, we were managing. But with coming out of the recovery of COVID, hopefully, we feel that we need to bring just over four people back into the organization, which still leaves us substantially less than we were coming into 2021. So with that, I'll let Lisa speak to the capital budget, and then we're prepared to take any questions that council has. Thank you.
Our capital budget is $8,577,000. The chart shows our funding sources of all the capital projects. One thing I wanted to mention is that we're anticipating our capital MSI to be cut by half. So we're borrowing more funds than we normally would just because we're missing that funding. The vast majority of our capital spend, $6.8 million, is from our Infrastructure Operations and Development Services Group. Heavy equipment replacements, upgrades, and attachments account for $1.5 million of the 2022 budget. Roads and infrastructure is approximately $1.9 million of the 2022 budget. And the utilities, infrastructure projects are approximately $3.3 million of the 2022 capital budget. The next slide is our capital map of where the capital projects are going to take place. And that's our presentation. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Lisa, and staff directors for your presentation. And my first question is kind of an overarching question. Mel, if you wouldn't mind being ready. You're always ready anyway to answer questions. Mine's an overarching question as we look at the proposed tax increases. I think everybody in here realizes that we've come off a very trying and difficult year economically as well as medically for a lot of people. So obviously, I'm sure we're all concerned about the tax increases that are proposed. My question to you is, if we're successful and Wheatland County agrees to the new cost-sharing formula for the recreation facilities in Strathmore, is there still time that some of that money, which is much larger than it has been in the past, could that be directed still this year to lessen a property tax increase, both residential and non-residential?
Thank you. We had included a contribution in both 2021 and 2022 for Wheatland County. In 2021, the contribution that we had in budget was was $147,000. In 2022, we had $515,000. We had anticipated that Wheatland would go beyond the amount they did have. So we'll have to offset some of that shortfall for '22 into 2021.
Okay, thank you. The other question, again tied into property tax increases for our public, I'm always worried about a public, especially after the year, almost the two years we've had. Do we, in your budget, did you allocate any revenue from the new solar farm, or is that still down the road?
We did not anticipate additional tax revenue in the 2022 year from the solar farm. It's still a question as to when the solar farm will become operational. And it needs to be operational on January 1st of the particular tax year for revenue to be payable to the town for taxes.
But you've probably factored in the lease payment since they're doing construction on that?
The lease payment is factored into the revenue, yes.
Okay, and then my third question, because I'm still desperately trying to find a way to lessen the tax increase. Should the Old Town Hall project, the Old Town Hall be sold if we're successful in finding a purchaser? Could some of that money be directed on time to lessen the tax impact on residents and commercial?
We have not included any potential gain from the sale of the property. But there are some other items that are not included in the budget. One pertains to the RCMP amount that will become liable for back pay on the collective agreement settlement. And that amount could be between $500,000 and $600,000. We have not put that in. There is a question as to whether the municipalities will be responsible for that or whether it'll become a provincial liability. And was there another item?
There's the reclamation.
There also is one other item that has come up in the last recent time, and that relates to contamination in our pivot fields. And we could be liable for an amount of up to $200,000 or in excess of $200,000. We do not, maybe we do know the exact amount. We do not know the exact amount.
Do we know where the contamination originated? We've had the property for about 30 years?
It related to the destruction and removal, not removal, the destruction of a residence that was on the property when it was purchased. And there's contamination as a result of that destruction of that.
Okay, and then just circling back to the possible sale of the Old Town Hall. If that does occur and funds come in before the end of December of this year, is it too late to have it impact property taxes for the 2022 year?
It's never too late. Council can direct those funds as they wish at whatever time prior to the passing of the tax rate bylaw in 2022.
Thank you. And since we have no idea who's going to be on council in late October, maybe there's a notation that can be made to have the new council consider that should the sale occur and the proceeds come to the town before the end of the calendar year. Thank you. That's all for me. Deputy Mayor Cox and then Councilor Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is kind of a silly question. On page 10 or 12, whatever, however you want to look at it, it says total expense is $36 million. Now, on the previous page, it says total revenue, $32 million. So where's the $4 million?
If you flip to your corporate plan.
Corporate plan?
Corporate business plan. You want to look at page five. So what, we have our revenue, which is showing $32 million. Our expenses are showing $36 million, which includes amortization of $6 million. Amortization is a non-cash charge and it gets added back. So that's where the difference is coming from.
Okay, that helps. And so just for another, my next question. You've said that the taxes, approximately $10.50 a month for residential, but then utilities is about $3 a month extra. Do they both have to be increased?
I think so. So the utilities, we want to make sure we increase, or we cover our increase in costs. So our contracts go up every year with our utilities. They go up by inflation. So we want to make sure we cover, which is about 2%. And then we want to cover our long-term debt payments as well because we're borrowing more money. And so that's why.
So last year, they told us what a 1% increase was worth. Can you tell us what that is worth? Like revenue, like?
A 1% tax increase is equivalent to $125,000 to $130,000.
Thank you very much, Mel. And then I had one more question. Oh, on your organization chart, you said you're adding four new. Is the four new in this plan already? Or are they fitting in somewhere else?
So, Mr. Chair, two of them will be, two of them will be in the fire department. One is in operations and one in accounting.
If everyone can flip to their corporate plan. It's on page 67 of 75 and go through the changes. So we have two in fire, finance increases, but we took a role from ledge services. Infrastructure operations, development, common services added some. We have parks, additional seasonal staff.
Civic center is the other one, sorry.
What page?
On my page, it's 67 of 75.
Page 67.
Oh, 67 of 75, okay. I was on 67 of 126. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cox, Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And thank you, administration, for your work on this so far. I have a couple of questions for you. So the first question is, how many people are currently in legislative services?
So thank you for that question, Counselor Montgomery. So through the mayor, we have a manager of legislative services. And then we have the executive assistant slash legislative clerk. That is one position. And then we have the records and FOIP analyst. So a total of three.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. And how much in this budget, how much is budgeted for severance payments?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't hear how much per?
In this budget, I realized, you know, last year that, you know, we're paying out severances every now and then. But I've never seen like, you know, a line in the budget that says, you know, severances. So I'm just wondering, how much is budgeted for severance payments?
Severance pays are not budgeted for as a separate item within the budget. They're primarily paid out as wages and are part of the wage and benefit number.
Okay, yeah, I kind of assumed as much. But do you try to predict, you know, like, is there like kind of a predicted amount that might have to be paid out in a given year? Or how does that, how does that get anticipated?
No, it is not predicted, and we do not include it as a separate number. We look at our wages as a total for each of the positions that we have budgeted for and/or in terms of the recreation facilities, the total number of hours and the amount of manpower that is needed at the different facilities to get to a number to deliver the service. But we do not book severances separately in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I've got a bit of a list here. How much is the budget for the new website, if I could ask?
I've been informed that it is $110,000.
I have $150,000.
Pardon me, $115,000.
Holy cow. Okay, and that's not done in-house, I take it? That's done by a contractor?
It's detailed on page 75 of 75. We would anticipate that would be fulfilled by a contractor and not done in-house.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
Counselor Montgomery, do you want me to come back to you?
No, sorry, I just, I lost my place in my list of questions here. So I guess I'm interested to know what these new event initiatives are. Can administration comment on that? Or would they prefer to report on that at a later meeting?
Thank you very much, Your Worship and council. Would you like me to provide a bit of an overview, Counselor? Or do you have specific questions?
I just referenced about new event initiatives, and I was wondering what that entails.
So a lot of the, like, the way that we broke it down is we had a lot of luck on a few different fronts with events this year. One of those fronts was like just our own pilot projects with say like Strathmore Day where we, where we invented a new, a new event and we planned to scale that up. So, so each year we'll be adding that, adding to that with like new elements and different pieces. Some of it's like both in economic development and in the events portfolio proper, we've, we've identified like grant opportunities. Because the, our town staff don't have enough capacity to, to put together an entire event and run and execute an entire event. So instead, we want to, to support community organizations to get their own events off the ground. This is something that we've seen a lot of success on like provincial and federal levels. And so on a local level, we think that this could have a lot of impact in the community. And then some of it is just, is resurrecting events that we've, that's, that's, we've tried it or like that the town has tried in the past, but have been dormant for a while. And so we'd like to bring those back. Just, I think that's, especially when we look at like the goals, not just about economic development, but in terms of like community engagement and bridging some of the polarization in the community. We think that bringing back some of these nostalgic events will also, also help in those other goals as well. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I certainly, I like the idea you're suggesting about, you know, facilitating people or groups, you know, hosting events. That's, I believe that's great for the community. So thank you very much for that. I guess, Jeff, and you might be able to answer this as well. And this has to do with like the, the plan for economic development. Is it the town's responsibility to worry about retention or expansion of businesses? Or is it? I guess, or is it kind of maybe better that the town look for ways to kind of get out of the way of, of businesses and so that they can kind of, the, you know, so we're not picking winners and losers essentially, they're, they're kind of, you know, making or breaking on their own?
Thank you very much, counselor. That's actually a really great question. Business retention and expansion, it's called BRNE in economic development. It's a huge part of, of economic development, partly because it's like, it recognizes one major thing and that's like oftentimes small businesses and small business owners don't have, like, they basically don't have enough time to be aware of the different programs that exist at different levels. So during the COVID response last year, one of the very first things that we did is we set up a COVID hotline. That was something that we could do so that we could do the, the legwork. We found all the grants. We found out what all the support programs were so that business owners didn't have to spend hours on websites and stuff like that figuring it out. It was us being able to connect them with the right information, with the right grant program. So we're not actually choosing like winners or we're not providing like funding to a specific business. What we're doing is we're, we're sort of a clearinghouse for information to make it easier for these businesses to find tax credits or grant programs or cooperative marketing programs, any of those different pieces that exist at the provincial and federal level. And both the province and the federal government recognize that there is this huge disconnect between the programs that they initiate and actually those programs lining, landing up in the hands of, of business owners. So one of the town's greatest strengths is like the networking and, and the, the knowledge that we have of local business. So business retention and expansion is really important. I think that this is something that if, if council is prioritizing economic development, that's an initiative that I would really strongly encourage you to, to see the value in.
Okay. And, and you know, thank you very much for that answer. That's right in line with what I've kind of mentioned about, you know, facilitation and. Yeah, I, so I certainly support facilitating this as that way. This is, I guess, for finance. I'm just wondering what some of the ways that financial reporting will be improved. If you could comment on that, please.
The financial reporting has improved over the last number of years. In the past, at one time, we would report to council a balance sheet, income statement and a tax statement. And now we've aligned our reporting. Both the time period that we report, we report quarterly. So it closer aligns with normal financial reporting. We've also provided more comprehensive reports. Our reports align with our audited statement. And so moving forward, we just want to be more robust in the information and capability of delivering financial information to council as the need arises.
Okay, you did like. Do you have any like specific ideas in mind when you say that? Or? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
So one of the ideas that we have is we're putting in a program right now called RecLogic. And this program will automate our POs. So we're tracking our POs and our commitments. So what we're hoping to do next year is to develop a forecast where we can come to quarterly and say, here are Q2 numbers. Here are we're forecasting we're going to be by the end of the year. So just to increase the robustness of that, so we can give it to our SLT team and to council to make sure that we're on track.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that answer. And yeah, thanks for. Thanks for taking the initiative on like that. And I guess like this, we probably Felisa again, besides like the, the kind of instance that you, or the example that you mentioned, is there any other kind of water conservation initiatives that you have planned or in mind at this time?
So we want to start looking into water conversation. It's come up before. We're playing around with a couple of ideas, but we really want to take a look to see what else we can do to improve it, to put a carrot out there where people will want to conserve more water, given the tools to do that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sorry, let's, go ahead.
Well, I was, I was wondering if you were finished your questions?
If somebody else wants to jump in, I've got a.
Let's go to Counsel. We'll go to Counsel Bauer when you come back to you, Counsel Bauer.
Yep.
Thank you, worship. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you. I like your report. It's very easy to read. It was user-friendly for me. I was able to understand it and I appreciate this format. I really do. The one thing I would like to ask before anything is passed is I've asked for a while now. But I haven't been successful, so I'm going to try and ask again. With this organizational chart, is it possible to have one? Is it possible to have one where we have all the FTS and the part-time people laid out so that we can see each department, who's in that department? And then further to that, if we could see how we compare to other municipalities of similar size? So that we know as council and we can justify to our public that we're not overspending in terms of employees, administration, that kind of thing. And then is it possible to even take that one step further? And I've seen with some municipalities on their website, they actually put a medium, a range of salaries. So a low to a high for a director or a low to a high for a manager or a low to high for different positions. Is that something that we can strive towards?
To you, Mr. Mayor, we cannot post staff's names on the website.
No, not staff's positions.
But we can put positions and for departments. We do have the organizational chart on the website now. But we can take it that one next and, and show the positions within each department. And we could take a look at doing something salary wise that is trying to address what you're asking for, I think.
I think that would be very timely, especially since Ms. Rusk did mention that you were going to be doing a compensation review and it would be good to, to know if we're in that, that range with other municipalities of same, similar size population. So thank you for that. So I don't need to put in an inquiry for that one, right? Because it's been done. Thank you. My, my next question is, you did say, Mr. TD, that a tax increase of 1% for residential taxes was between 125 and 130. But I didn't catch what you said a 1% increase in commercial taxes was.
That's a combined all-in tax rate increase.
So 1% increase in residential and?
Commercial combined. On an average basis. That's reflective of our total tax base. Not, not divided up individually. What we've said is if we're going to increase expenses by $125,000, that equates to roughly a 1% tax increase. And we haven't gone beyond that to determine the allocation. What we can tell you is our taxes for commercial is about 31% of our overall taxes.
And that should be closer to 50, right? Because you want to have a, a balance between commercial and residential. Is that correct?
The.
In an ideal world.
If, if there was a 50% premium on taxes for non-residential, we would be reflective of other communities in the surrounding area. If the tax rate or if the mill rate was 50% higher than the residential rate, we would be reflective of other communities overall on a broad basis.
Okay, thank you. And could you go back to the information that you said about the pivot fields? Are they being, is there a plan for development to those pivot fields? And is that why we need to remove that contamination?
The solar farm is the development and yes, my understanding is that we need, do need to remove that contamination in order to proceed with that. With the development of the solar farm.
So what I'd like to know is why do you, and this is just like, I, I really just don't understand this and I just need to ask this question. Why do you need to remove contamination when you're putting cement and solar panels on something instead of having, like, we've had cows graze in that field and it seems to have been fine. But we're not putting people there. We're putting solar panels. So why the addition, additional expense? Why is it required? Is it a provincial mandate? Is it federal? What is the reasoning behind it? Thank you.
Your mayor and to you, counselor. The item which Mr. TD mentioned was an old building. It was actually buried. And so when they started their piling work, they uncovered it. And when it was uncovered, that's when the contamination was found. And, you know, legally, we're not allowed to just bury a contaminant. It has to be treated properly. So once it was found, it had to be disposed of properly. We, we didn't have an option to just leave it there.
All right. So we're just doing our due diligence.
Yeah, but Counselor Cox is one ahead of me. Put your mic on.
Sorry, your worship and counselor. It was an old building that was buried. And that building, due to construction practices back in the day, contained items which are asbestos containing and therefore had to be disposed of properly.
So, Mr. Wilson, we've had other issues in the community where similar things have happened, both on commercial property and, and town property. And we've been able to get provincial assistance. Is it, do you think that there's any option for that to be able to move forward with this?
Your worship to you, counselor. I, we can look into it absolutely. We haven't at the start or at the moment. The contractor out there is the one who is dealing with the disposal. And once we have collected all the costs, we'll look at that option.
Thank you.
Counselor Bauer again.
Thank you. Just two last points. Has the have each department had the opportunity to look at other ways to gather revenue from other sources for the town?
We looked at the fees from planning, for instance, today. We do look at our recreation fees that we charge, our user fees. Our biggest component, our biggest revenue source other than taxes is utilities. And so we're monitoring that annually. We've brought forward and, and the objective going back a few years was to get to a position of break even. Recover all of our costs. We've done that. We've exceeded that. And we're putting money aside into reserves from utilities. Now, have we maximized out every area? I'm not sure we have. We've maximized the franchise fees. That was a big area. We're, we're at, we can't go further than where we're at. So it's, it's the, the smaller areas now that we're looking at, whether it's recreation, planning and development, whatever. One area that is, is down significantly as a result of COVID is our fines. Not a lot we can do about it. We don't have a lot of control over that. But we are trying to maximize where we have some control over the fees.
Mr. Nagor?
Yes, in addition to that, Mr. Mayor. Post-federal election, we'll be ready to move very quickly if there is any announcement on grant funding for infrastructure, which typically there is right after election. We'll be ready to move on that. The other item that we've asked finance to look at is our utility rates. We're trying to see if there's a way we can lessen the burden on those individuals that use less water and put, and switch that over to the higher in volume users. So it basically helps out your lower income senior sector of your population within the community. So we are taking a look at that as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then in terms of process, will there be an opportunity for the new council to also go through the budget? And then when we first came in back in 2017, we identified things that community members had told us that were important to them and then started kind of a wish list so that over the four years, we could try and implement them with council approval. Will there be that same opportunity, do you think? Or is this? Because it feels kind of bleak.
The new council absolutely has to approve the corporate plan. We're looking for this council to recommend to the new council consideration of this corporate plan because you are the people that have the experience over the last four years. And a new council coming in certainly can consider whatever programs they would like to enact and follow. And certainly we'll have that opportunity, but we're not looking for formal adoption of this budget tonight. It'll be up to the new council, but we're, we're desirous of this council to recommend that they consider this plan.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions, your worship.
Thank you. Just if I can piggyback on what Counselor Bauer just said, it's quite a departure, it feels like, from what we used to do in, in those weekend sweatshops that were run by the town. Those were tough. And but, but I remember it being much more granular and we were much more hands-on as far as, you know, cut this, cut that, add that. This feels a little bit different to that. And so I guess my question to you is, do you feel, do you folks feel you've all streamlined your budgets as much as possible? Again, keeping in mind the tax increases that potentially face our residents. Thank you.
I think it's safe to say that we started out with a big number, bigger number and worked down to what we felt we could recommend that's in, within the realm of being reasonable and. that's in within the realm of being reasonable and possible and not too onerous. I outlined some of the things that we had not considered just a few minutes ago in terms of the large ticket items that are not reflected in the budget. And so there are some nuances that we may have to deal with going ahead. But we certainly feel that each department participated fully and did what they could in order to get at a reasonable number that is workable considering our economic situation presently.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson.
Thank you, your worship. My first question relates again to staffing. And in 2017 and 2018, this council went through some pretty rigorous exercises around around what a what a healthy staffing looked like for a community of our size. And one of the things it imprinted on me during those discussions was that communities between 10,000 and 25,000 were deemed to be very healthy if they could keep their staffing ratio percentage of budget below 40%. And my understanding and looking at what you presented us today that we are below that, we're in about that 36% range, I believe. And I just I just wanted to to make sure that that was heard by our public because I think that that in times of COVID and with the challenges that this community has faced in terms of of economic development, that that's a really important consideration that speaks to the health, the overall health of the organization in terms of keeping it pretty lean and careful. My second question relates to community and protective services. And and it is with regards to what Mr. Pretzoff spoke about in terms of of setting up collaborations. And I'm really happy to see already the work that you've done with Wheatland County and Sixakha. Glad to see that you're going to pursue that. I was wondering if we would look beyond that, if we would look to Rocky View County and perhaps to our northern county as well in terms of emergency management.
Through the chair, yes, councillor Peterson, I think our intention is to form that regional collaborative collaborative model where we can assist if necessary or likewise if if we're ever called upon to provide aid.
Thank you. And then my my final question is to the intrepid team of Mr. Doug Dale and Ms. McCallum with regards to to all things infrastructure and operations in terms of, we had conversations during, I think it became predominant during the conversation about the solar panel, about the solar field, and then of course the pivot fields, which is clearly the gift that just keeps on not giving. And when we talk about that whole idea and all the things that have gone with it, I'd be really interested, if not tonight, at some future time, in hearing in hearing more about the work that you're doing around carbon neutrality. And and I know that carbon neutrality is maybe not the best thing to talk about. It doesn't mean that we're getting better, but it means that we're working really hard to not be worse. And and I think about the things that you're doing with regards to transportation and energy production and water conservation and and maybe urban agriculture going forward and and how we can monetize that carbon neutrality through through those federal grants that that our CAO just spoke to. So I'd be I'd be really interested in hearing about that in the future and think that is a way to monetize our our good work going forward. That's all I have, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cox.
Thank you, your worship. I was kind of hoping somebody else would ask, but. Big question. So with the tax increase, the 3.9, the 5.9, the 2% utilities, what are we putting away in reserves? The big question, the big thing we've heard over and over and over again, what we're not doing well? How are we getting there with this? You're going to confuse me on page numbers, aren't you?
On page 21 of 75.
21 of 75.
We have the individual transfers to reserves. So the first one is interest transfer to reserves of 235,000. That comes in from investment income. The second one, utility infrastructure reserve, 230,000. That combines with the storm reserve, 245,000. So those are the amounts that we bill on the utility bill, the flat reserve amounts.
So that's like the $6 one that we did.
Well, it's it was six and then we, I think it's 750.
Okay.
The SMP common capital replacement reserve. And so that is in recognition of the field house and the agreement that we have there. Civic center reserve. It's the town share of the contribution for the commercial kitchen replacement fund that we have with Golden Hills. And then a field house reserve of $7,000. So a total of $800,000 going into reserves. So.
So just to just to clarify, as as councillor Bauer had said, the 1% increase, so we're doing 3.9 in one hand and 5.9, but when you come, if you combine, basically, we're doing 5.9, right? That's, so it's 5.9% is what's the actual increase? No, that's not right. Okay, okay. Confused.
3.9 would apply to the tax bill for residents. 5.9% would attach to the non-residential, which is commercial, linear and all those.
So what I want to know is, with this 3.9 and this 5.9, what's what's the amount of revenue that you're going to increase?
The increase in the tax revenue. So on page seven of 75. The second and third column. So the taxes would go from 18,885,000 to 19,679,000. So that's a roughly an $800,000 increase.
Exactly what your reserve transfers are going. Thank you. That's answered my question perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cox. Again, circling back in my perfect world, you know, I know you you folks have worked really hard to try to get this as low as possible. I do worry about the 5.9 for our non-residential. So again, I'd like to circle back to that if if we're successful in getting that cost sharing. If I think Wheatland County has been so forthright, we had a good meeting with Mr. Legore and their REVE and their CAO. And if we are able to successfully secure some money for next year, that would be a I would love to see it used to cut down that non-residential tax increase. But that'll be up to others possibly. Thank you for all your efforts and your work and your staff, all the directors. Any other questions from councillors? Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you very much. All right, let's see here. So I guess this would be for Mark. About expanding the services and programs, you know, for instance, at the SMP. Would, so I'm under the impression that that our programs are generally, don't really generate revenues. Is there any programs that we run that 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 do generate a positive, like a net positive? You know, when you're accounting for everything, including like administration time and all that kind of stuff?
Through the chair councillor Montgomery, our goal is to have revenue neutral or revenue generated programs. Some of the challenges when we're when we're starting and creating new programs is to build capacity. We think there's the success of our summer camp program this this year. We believe that there's a possibility that could be a revenue generating program moving forward. Obviously, there's a lot of challenges associated with when when we restart or when we have new programs is building that capacity, building, marketing that, no different than a new business. Those first couple of years may be a struggle as we try to understand what market and what the what the community needs. So again, our goal is to try to have revenue neutral at best or definitely revenue generating.
Thank you. And I guess this would go for any any suggestion of like, you know, kind of running a program or anything like that. I would certainly, and I would think it'd be beneficial for future councils to see like some sort of a business case. Because, you know, when I look at like, when I when I looked at, you know, the programs that have been run previously, and this isn't a criticism at all of any anybody who's, you know, administering them or, you know, coming up with them. But a lot of times we end up spending, you know, more to kind of, you know, do the program than, you know, we ever are going to come close to, you know, kind of recouping. And it would almost be better to just, you know, almost just give the space away, you know, use of the space away to somebody who is going to run a class of some sort. You know, you take like, say yoga or something like that, you know, like that way, it's not really our risk. You know, we're not, you know, we're not spending the money on the instructor, we're not spending money on the marketing, all that other stuff. You know, as long, and then, you know, once the person, you know, who we've kind of given the space to, you know, at some sort of a good rate, once they've built up capacity on their own, which isn't our risk, then, you know, they, then at that point, you know, you can look at kind of, you know, renegotiating the the cost of the usage. So are are you interested in in kind of, I guess, you know, doing that kind of analysis and providing that kind of analysis just to justify, you know, how it's better, you know, for the town to, you know, offer certain programs rather than just, you know, getting out of the way essentially of of other people taking that risk themselves?
Through the chair councillor Montgomery, we do a combination of things. There are some elements like straps more like user groups, like minor hockey, that really just rent the space and then they provide the service specifically to to the community. Sometimes we partner with them to to deliver some programs such as sport ball and items like that where they are looking for space and we charge them at a minimal rate to not even to cover our costs, just to start the program in order to service the public. And then sometimes we deliver it ourselves when we recognize that there's a need and potentially a revenue generating opportunity. That's when we try to capitalize that.
Yeah, I guess so in the end, like, is it just administration's decision about, you know, the capacity for offering programs? Or like if if council said, hey, we don't want to be in the business of of, you know, offering programs, we just want to rent the space to people that will offer programs. Is that something administration would, you know, look at doing?
Yes, through the chair, we actually do that in some capacity right now where the general public or a private business will come in and rent the space from us and deliver a program. They believe that there's a market for it and sometimes that that's the case. And so we we charge minimal, we charge our rates that are set by council for those spaces. And the the private company would come in and based on that would would operate and deliver their service. So again, we do a combination of it. Sometimes it's all through the private business. Sometimes it's a combination of us working with the 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 company to deliver it and sometimes, again, we coordinate ourselves.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to know that you guys are at least looking at all angles. Thank you very much, Mark. So I'm associated with, I guess, municipal enforcement. I noticed that it mentions municipal enforcement enhancing their public presence. What is the plan for that?
Through the chair, we're, you know, our peace officers and our municipal enforcement right now is a great example of their presence throughout the community with in the with kids going back to school. Often our officers are out there either liaison with in the school zones, trying to make ensure that they're safe for for everybody there. They have presences at some of our events. We're looking, I think the town is hosting one of our annual triathlons and they'll be there assisting with traffic control and things like that. Ultimately, it's it's to just make their presence known so that that they're out there and that if the community needs them, that they're that they understand that they're present.
Is that something that like takes, you know, like a bigger budget? Or is that done, you know, using the existing, you know, allotment, let's say?
Through the chair, there's obviously there's, it's a balancing act between enforcing the bylaws and 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 things like that. And if there was an increased presence, increased resources, then we could have a community engagement officer or things like that. But right now with, as Mr. TD indicated, our our risk, where we're at in terms of the the overall financial state of the organization, where we think that this is a sufficient amount of resources to support what's needed.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, like, you know, as as we're all aware, we're, you know, it's the budget is, you know, well, let's say dollars are tight and, you know, there's kind of like things we need to have. And then there's the nice to haves and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, kind of going too far down the road of, you know, like kind of the nice to haves versus the need to haves as far as things we focus on. And Mark, are you the person to talk to about the fire department?
I'll do my best to answer those questions.
Okay. So I mentioned the fire prevention program. Is that going to be handled strictly by the full-time firefighters?
Through the chair, I think it'll be a combination as we've done in the past. Obviously, the goal is to to utilize as many of our full-time firefighters in the capacities that they can. But we also have a number of volunteers who are looking to augment their volunteer hours. And if their schedules allow for that, then we try to incorporate them into whatever initiatives we have going.
See, something that like, I guess, has, you know, been a concern for me for a couple of years now with regards to the fire department is efficiency. And and that has to do with, you know, for instance, you know, as we were bringing on full-time firefighters over the last couple of years, I noticed that, you know, the the budget for full-time firefighters was, you know, like for firefighters or salaries was on there and it was, you know, it was increasing. But the the budget that we were budgeting for the paid-on-call, you know, or volunteers was also increasing. And that did really kind of make a lot of sense to me that we should be spending, you know, the, I you'd think that if we have full-time firefighters, you know, that that should cut out the need for the paid-on-call. And and I want to make sure that we're having like, I guess, a hard look at how the fire department is utilizing their full-time members. You know, like, for instance, you know, are we having, you know, paid-on-call people doing, you know, predictable inspections, you know, as opposed to are we or are we getting, you know, our full-times to be doing those inspections, you know? Are we, is it most efficient to have, you know, one paid-on-call with the three full-times on a shift? Is is that the most efficient? Is that going to be gone, you know, is that going to be gotten rid of as we move towards, you know, hiring a couple or one more full-time, you know, firefighter? And so I just want to make sure that that we, yeah, like, you know, as as we kind of look at, you know, as, as we kind of look at, you know, bringing on more full-times, that we're actually reducing the amount or the need for the amount of, of paid-on-call. And I, you know, that, I just want to make it clear, I, I have no problem with, you know, the quality of the people at the fire department. I have no problem with the quality of work. My concern is entirely about efficiency and about, you know, making sure that the people that we are, are paying, you know, to do any kind of work are, are being utilized to the best, you know, the best use essentially. And, and the fire department is, is a concern for me. So I would like to know how, you know, hiring, you know, more full-times will affect the budget, how that will affect the, the need for and the use of a paid-on-call, how that's going to affect the, the budget for the paid-on-call. And then again, like, I just want to make sure that, that we're, that we're, we're using our full-times, you know, to the, the absolute, you know, best, most efficient ways to, to control costs in that area. Can you comment on that?
Through the Chair, yes, Council Montgomery, I think our goal would, is obviously to, to have anybody who's at the fire hall working in some capacity. I think it is a combination, the services that we deliver is a combination of, of paid full-time and, and paid-on-call. But as I said, whenever possible, those full-time firefighters do the responsibilities that are required of them in whatever capacity it may be. And when, when the need demands that we have additional staff required, that's when we look to have that paid-on-call. I think our, once we get our new fire chief in, in position, he'll, he or she will be able to have a better idea of, of when, what services we need. And, and I, I agree with you, the goal is to ensure efficiency within of all those individuals.
Mark, if I could jump in, the full-time firefighters also help us in our, in our 90-10 response time as well. They help with the rollout, they're, they're effective as far as getting a, a unit to be ready to go out with the volunteers.
That is correct, Your Worship. When those individuals are on, on site, it's just, it's common sense that they're all, their, their ability to, to react and to respond to emergency calls are, are increased versus a non-call position.
Thank you. I know in the last council I was on, the 90-10 response time was a huge issue to the point where we were looking at possible satellite stations, a possible station in the north part of the town, and that's incredibly costly. And the mayor of Cochrane was talking to me, Jeff Chenang, and he was saying, you know, the full-time fire department is incredibly expensive. And it will, it's, it was the thing that was the largest financial issue to them in many, many years. So having, having the full-time positions helps with that response time and that other part. Anything else, Council Montgomery?
Yeah, I, I do unfortunately. So what, what, I guess, Mark, if you could talk about, you know, what is the, what, what has, I guess, created a need for hiring another full-time? It's another, just one full-time firefighter, is that correct?
Through the Chair, it's actually two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, but there's some, there's some other staffing changes, transitions that, that, that changed that dynamic within the hall already.
Okay. And, and just like, just to be clear, like what, what is, like, why are we hiring two more? Pardon me for, you know, kind of asking maybe one set of two's question, but what is the need for hiring two more full-times?
Through the Chair, I think as, as the mayor indicated, it, it really comes back down to response rates. That definitely is a, is a contributing factor into the decision to, to request these additional positions. This would allow our, our department to respond to emergencies much faster and hopefully prevent less property damage.
Mr. Legore.
Through you, Mayor. In addition, the quicker your response time, the less their need is for a satellite station, which can save substantial capital costs, both in building and then the equipment that you have to put in that building. And you still may have to hire a couple of paid, full-time firefighters even for that satellite station. So the longer you can push that off into the future, the better off the municipality is. And the way to do that is full-time firefighters. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And, and based on our current call volume, it's that, that, that's a necessity at this time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we believe it is. And you, you can't just go on call volume, because if your call volume is low, that doesn't mean you need less firefighters, because a week later you could have a major fire and not have the resources. You have to understand that these firefighters don't just sit in the hall and wait for a call. By having the paid-on-call or the paid firefighters there, we're able to do full-time inspections, which helps businesses stay safer, helps the community stay safer, and possibly saves lives. Don't forget, we're also first responders. Almost always when there's an ambulance call and there's no ambulance available, it's your firefighters that are on the scene. They're the first ones there helping these people. And that is a huge benefit to the community. It's not happening in just Strathmore, it's happening all over. You go to Edmonton and Calgary, the big cities, Red Deer, you'll find that the firefighters are first responders. Especially with the problems we're having with the ambulance today, it's putting more and more pressure on them. If you're there at that hall at seven o'clock in the morning, that place is alive and active. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So just to be clear, the intent is to have the full-times handling the predictable, the predictable scheduled work then?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for answering that question. I, I have a question about the emergency management agreement. Actually, if I can make one comment about the fire department, and that is that, have, has there been any discussion, you know, with the former CIO, I, I did, you know, kind of talk to him about ways that, you know, we can recoup some of the cost of, you know, the carrying cost of, of our services by looking for, you know, ways to partner. And I'll give you an example, for instance, with Wheatland County. So I, I understand that our fire department already responds to calls in Wheatland County. And Mr. Legore, I believe you said that there is some compensation that is paid for those responses?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. At times there is compensation. It depends whether the call is under a mutual aid agreement or whether it's a response to a highway motor vehicle accident. We do try and charge for all fire calls that we're capable of. But there's times when you are helping out neighbors that you're not getting compensation for. And for example, we have worked closely with six, six-ice nation, trying to get mutual aid agreements with them, both for fire and emergency services. And I can tell you that our interim fire chief is making inroads there. And we do now have a very good working relationship and hopefully we can advance that to where we have MOUs in place.
Great. So I guess my question is for administration in general, and that is that can, can we, can we look at perhaps, you know, offering our fire service to Wheatland County as part of an ongoing, you know, cost that they might be willing to share, you know, for say like the western side of Wheatland County or something like that? You know, we would be providing value to them and, you know, and they wouldn't have to, you know, you would think, wouldn't have to expend money on their own fire department to cover essentially the same service area. Has administration gone down that road at all with Wheatland County?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have had and will continue to have discussions with Wheatland County on regional fire services. There is many merits to that and we will continue to look at it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Council Montgomery, could we turn to Deputy Mayor Cox for a little bit?
Absolutely, yep.
It's okay, Your Worship. Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of touch base on your, your inse- insecurity about the increased taxes. Mel, when we first started, we kind of made a plan that we were going to increase gradually over five years, right? Four years?
You're referencing the differential between residential and commercial.
Okay.
The, the premium paid by the non-residential taxpayers. Yes, there was a plan, however, with the zero percent.
Right.
And the, the only inroads we have made is the two years prior where we've had the split rate of 3.9, 5.9 in the prior years prior to 2020.
So I think what I'm trying to get at is the commercial businesses that you're referring to already knew that we were doing that. The only thing that stopped it was COVID. And that's where we said, okay, we'll do zero. So we are really still on the same exact path that we were in year one, right? So they are prepared for that. So it shouldn't be as bad as, as when we first did it. Because they actually did get that one-year bereavement for COVID.
We had, we had completed those two years of tax increases. The recommendation was to go really beyond that, but we limited it to the 3.9, 5.9 or 6.9, whatever we did in those years, I think it was 5.9. And we also have improved that premium. We've gone to, from 14 or 15% to 18 or 19%, whatever it is now. And so we've made some inroads, not nearly the recommended, recommended amount that's in the long-term financial plan.
Correct. But, yeah, but, yeah, no, I think that's, what I was looking for was that we were still on that same path that we were when we started. We just had that one year where it was zero. So this shouldn't be too much of a shock to those commercial businesses, because we had warned them that that's what we were doing.
That's correct. We had started down that road and that still is the intent to create that premium. And if it's done over 10 or 15 years, it's, I believe, still the right move. We cannot continue to offer the same services as other communities unless we charge the rates that the other communities charge. And one of those factors is the additional taxes paid by commercial.
Thank you. Any other councilors have questions? Councilor Montgomery?
Thank you. So I guess one question I have is about the cemetery bylaw. What is the cemetery bylaw for exactly? Like what will that, what will that be for?
Are you talking about the new, the new one that was mentioned?
Yes.
The adjustment?
Is that just a cemetery fee that's going to be changed? Or like, I just read it as a cemetery bylaw, so I didn't know what that meant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to look at the, I believe it's the cemetery bylaw, Council Montgomery's asking about. We're going to review it and we're going to update it. It's been some time and make sure our policies are all in line with bylaw, et cetera. And try and provide a better service to the community.
Deputy Mayor Cox?
I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. We've, we, we tried this once already and it, it went over really, really poorly. And we ended up rescinding it, didn't we? Well, somewhat. So I just want to cautious, caution you that, that there are some stakeholders that...
They will be consulted with, Mr. Mayor. And we will try again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And I guess like, so the, the report on the manpower assessment, will that be coming forward to council at some point in your future?
Sorry.
The manpower assessment, sorry?
I couldn't hear the question, I apologize.
Oh, there was, there was a reference to, I believe it was in, uh, operations about a manpower assessment. I was just wondering what that was. Yeah, what that, what that was referring to?
Through Your Worship, I believe that would have already come before council, is that correct, in 2019?
Oh, okay. So it was referencing a past, a past one, okay. Thank you. So my next question is, has to do with like the sidewalk repair and replacement. Are these all like kind of pre-tendered or like, or like, do we just kind of, do we go and like assess like a whole bunch? And then RFP, like that whole amount of sidewalks, or do we do it piecemeal?
Any of the repairs done to the existing sidewalks, there was an assessment done in 2019. And we do have a preferred contractor that we use. We have never gone to tender for the repairs. Basically, what we do is the, the assessment was given classifications of severity of damage to the sidewalk and where it needs to be repaired. So based on a five to a one, five being super severe, like could possibly result in lawsuits, down to a one, which would be maybe a low trip hazard. So we've been working at getting the fives and the fours done. But with our freeze-thaw cycles, a three, a two could easily move up to a five. So basically each year we look at that, we go reassess it and then determine based on the budget how much money we have to repair those sidewalks. And no, it has not gone to tender before, it's just been done through an existing contractor that's been used. Lowest price, basically.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were getting the lowest price for the best deal possible for that.
May I please ask a question, Your Worship, regarding that last statement? Donna, I was actually looking for that report. It was an infrastructure report that was done on sidewalks, roads, road repair. That was the, the report that was shared with council, am I correct in referencing that?
The one I'm talking about was a sidewalk condition assessment.
And where would I find that right now? Because I was looking for it the other day and I didn't know whether or not it was something that was just shared with council. Or if it's been put on the website, or how would I go back? Do you remember the, the month that we received that report?
I don't think it was something that I brought forward. It possibly Mr. Nichols had brought it forward, I can certainly look into that. And if council wants to see it, I can certainly share it with you. It probably would be very interesting for you to see like, just the overall conditions of the, the sidewalks in town.
I think it's really valid, because that's part of the reason that we need to have those reserves is for the specific projects. And not only to address liability, like you've just said, but also the general beautification of our town and to just keep on top of that thing. So thank you for referencing that. Sorry, Councilor Montgomery?
That's all right. And I apologize to everybody for, for all the questions that everyone's having to sit through. My next question has to do with, and this will be for planning and development, I presume. It mentioned something about a 20% commercial property assessment goal. I was wondering how that's going to be reached, is that something that's done through the MDP?
Through Your Worship, the MDP is one tool, but there's probably many different mechanisms that could be used to kind of move towards that goal. That, that span, I would argue, all divisions within the organization. But certainly MDP is one tool, land use bylaw is another, you could even argue economic development. So I would argue there's several different ways we can do that. But the MDP is certainly the first, I'd say, policy tool that'll start us down that direction. I think one thing that's probably most important is to continue to measure that to see if we're getting better over time. Because I know many municipalities have similar goals and they don't measure it and they wonder why it doesn't happen. So that's one thing we'll look at doing as well.
Great. Thank you very much. So here's a, I guess, a tough... So here's, I guess, a tough one. I think this is probably for finance. Especially with utilities and the utility budgets. So what happens to the surplus funds in utilities once, you know, all the reserves have been transferred? And there's, you know, been long-term, you know, debt principal repayments made? What happens to that surplus?
Presently, the surplus is used to subsidize property taxation. We do not transfer to reserves beyond the amount that is purposefully indicated in the program or in the corporate plan, other than that. So if there is if there's a surplus in any of the any and all of the the utility operating departments, it's currently going against taxation to reduce taxation.
Okay. And I hate to I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. T. And and I guess I'll I'll let you answer this, and then and then I'll kind of speak to it, I guess. When we say that we are increasing utility fees for full-cost recovery, is it true that we're already, you know, well in we're well exceeding, you know, what it costs to actually run the utilities and set aside money? And so when we increase fees on utilities, as you said, like that surplus goes towards towards, you know, like keeping taxes down essentially. So is it? Is it entirely accurate to characterize it as full-cost recovery? Or are we already kind of? I just don't think, you know, I ran into this problem, I'll tell you. I ran into this problem last year where, you know, I'd been telling people all along we were increasing their utility fees for full-cost recovery. And then to me, that meant, you know, we're not covering the cost of of kind of supplying the utilities. And therefore, we had to increase, you know, to cover the cost of that. But then I noticed, you know, like that we had been, you know, producing this year-over-year surplus of, you know, in the range of, you know, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And and so it it struck me that, you know, we're not really, you know, we're already covering our costs. So when we increase utility fees, you know, and we say it's for full-cost recovery, is that necessarily the most accurate way to say it? And and I guess for the public, you know, the money has to come from somewhere. And whether it comes from taxes or utilities, you know, has to come from one of those places. I just want to make sure that, like, you know, for me, it comes down to speaking accurately. And I have no problem, you know, defending, you know, having to raise taxes or that, you know, like I said, raised. I've defended, you know, franchise fees, you know, as a as a source of revenue. I just want to make sure that when I when I tell people something that it's, you know, perfectly accurate, I guess. So is it fair to say that we're already at full-cost recovery for utilities? Even if we didn't raise rates?
On page sixty-three of seventy-five, we've outlined the utilities' operating budget. The second, pardon me, the third last line, surplus of revenue over expenses and funding uses. We have we have a budgeted surplus in twenty twenty-two of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So yes, we have exceeded that, but that can evaporate real quickly in a year where we have not much water usage, where we might have a rainy season and both the because we don't residents do not water as much, their water consumption drops. Also with that, their sewer charges would drop because the sewer is based on the amount of water usage. So that four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars could evaporate real quickly. We have a total revenue of in excess of ten million dollars for utilities. Four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is a very small margin of error.
Okay. And and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate that now. And and I appreciate the work that you've done here. I have a question about the amortization, you know, and that same sheet.
Mr. LaGore has a comment?
Through your wish, Mr. Mayor, if I could, to Counselor Montgomery on his last question there. You have to remember, too, that many of your big utility users do not pay property taxes.
Right, I like, I guess the issue is that, like, you know, and as I said, you know, for the public, it has to come either from taxes or from utilities. The problem is that, you know, people see their utility bills just, you know, kind of going up year after year after year. And, you know, at a certain point, it's it's there's a disconnect between the value that we're providing, you know, and and the, you know, the the value that they're gaining, you know, from the utilities. And and never mind that it's it is, you know, getting harder and harder for a lot of people to pay these these costs. And as I said, I obviously recognize it has to come from either taxes or from from utilities or, you know, franchise fees or, you know, other types of fees like that. I I just, I think we should be careful, you know, especially when it comes to things like, you know, utility rates. You know, and you've made all good points, of course. I just but yeah, so my question, though, sorry for Mr. TD, was with regards to the amortization. Where does that amortization come from? Is that is that like that's, I presume, that's part of the expenses line? And then it's just added back in, is that right?
Amortization is prescribed by our policy relating to assets and depreciation. And so it's it's set based on the useful life of a particular asset. Different classes of assets have different useful lives. And so they're amortized over that period of time. Whether the rate might be five percent, it might be ten percent on machinery machinery and equipment. It might be thirty percent. So it depends on the class of the asset and the rate of depreciation of each of those assets.
Right. But my my question is like, you know, like, obviously, is that amortization amount, is that is that an expense for us as well? You know, is it part of that nine point nine point seven five nine million? And?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I see, okay. Okay. Yeah, and I guess just like, again, for the public's awareness, you know, one of the things that this this document mentions is that there is a fifty-six million dollar unfunded or underfunded, but probably unfunded liability with regards to infrastructure in the town. And so there's, you know, is that's why I keep saying, you know, there's not any spare money, you know, for and there's a reason why I I've supported raising taxes, you know, during this term. It's it's an unfortunate reality, and we need to play catch-up at this time. Okay. So I'll try to cut out I'll cut out some more of the kind of the the questions that are from my own edification here. One question I have is with regards to the increase in of salaries. And it mentioned something about a five percent increase. And then it mentioned something about a two point five percent for cost of living and step. And those are those are two separate things, are they not? So are we saying it's a two point five percent increase on on step? Or cost of living or both?
On page seventeen, in the last sentence of the paragraph below the graph, it reads, "A cost of living slash step increase of two point five cent, two point five percent, starting July first, twenty twenty-two, has also been included in the twenty twenty-two budget. This increase is estimated to cost one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The twenty twenty-one budget only included a cost of living increase of one point five percent."
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Oh, so on, sorry, on the administration operating budget, I don't know what page that is. I'll try to find it. Anyways, my question is, there's there was a dark blue part of the pie chart. It wasn't an insignificant piece of the pie. Okay, so it's page twenty-six of seventy-five. I'm just wondering what that oh, never mind, sorry. I didn't see, if you hold the paper in a certain light, you can see it says finances thirteen percent. Okay, sorry, I was confused by that. I'll answer answer my own question. I saw I saw some mention about job performance being tied to compensation. Can can somebody just kind of elaborate on that a bit, please?
Could you repeat the question, please?
There was a reference to looking at some sort of a system where job performance is tied to compensation. And I was just wondering if I just wanted to learn more about that.
Compensation is directly tied to performance. And within the performance management system, we gauge their performance, and if they're satisfactory or better, they they are subject to a step increase if they're eligible. We have not had any step increases for three or four years, I believe. Three years, am I correct now? Three years. And we've only had one total increase in the last four years now.
Thank you, Mr. LaGore. So my question has to do with the council budget. So it mentioned something about about four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And I was just wondering, like, besides salaries and benefits, is there anything else that's included in that four hundred and thirty thousand? Because the salaries are you know, about three hundred thousand or, you know, less, like, you know, two seventy-five or so. I was just wondering what the other part was made of.
So, Counselor Montgomery, one of the the other pieces is tied to any sort of professional development, expenses, all of that is also captured within within the council budget. Going forward, we're also going to be putting funds in here for strategic planning on like on a, you know, once every four years kind of kind of thing to make because that wasn't previously budgeted for. Council orientation wasn't also previously budgeted for. So some of the increases that you'll see are because they're things that we have to do, but they were not previously budgeted for.
Okay, that was, thank you very much.
The other thing that it includes is per diems, business travel, business events, and grants.
Thank you very much.
Your Worship? Just to the to the council budget, it also would include benefits, which was new in our last in this council. You did say that? Thank you, yeah, wages and benefits.
Hey, and I'll just I'll submit some of these questions in writing because there's literally hundreds of questions here, so I'm kind of joking. And I guess one thing, yeah, one thing, if I could just make a suggestion for the next council, especially with regards to the the capital, you know, expenditure list. I think it'd be very a very good idea to, as I mentioned before, provide like a business case. You know, like, there's, as I said, there's some, you know, things that are necessary, and then there's some things that are nice to have. And you know, like, you know, new flooring, for instance, you know, like at the fire hall. That's, you know, it's it's a nice to have, you know, but it's it's not like a necessity. And obviously, it's tough to provide a business case for, you know, new flooring, something like that. But, you know, there's other expenses that, you know, like, for instance, the the sidewalk planer. You know, I'd be interested to know, like, anything like that, you know. It's like, we should know how much we're we're spending already on these types of things, how much, you know, we would save, how much we would spend on maintenance over the life of it, you know, the 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 sale value. Just so that we can make sure that we have a really good idea. You know, because we, over the last number of years, we bought like a number of, you know, major pieces of equipment. And we're looking at a number of major pieces of equipment coming up. And I think it'd be very helpful to just future councils to have a really good idea about how exactly it's, you know, better to buy something, you know, like that rather than to just, you know, try to contract it out or, you know, find some other solution. So that that would be something that I would, you know, recommend to administration. And I I hope that you'll you'll consider that. It would be very helpful. And I guess, yeah, I'll leave some of these questions up to the next the next council to ask about the one one question I do have, and this will be my last question. This has to do with the steam room at the swimming pool. So that that steam room is obviously quite new, you know. The number of hours it's been in operation has got to be, you know, in the low hundreds, I would say, between just the time it's been operating and not operating. And, you know, we're we're looking at spending a hundred thousand dollars to to get it fixed, which, I mean, like, you know, having been in the renovation business myself, I can tell you that a hundred thousand dollars towards something like that means a total, almost a total redo of the the room. And then, you know, some of the things that were listed that needed to be redone, it seems like, you know, that there's major, major problems with that room. And I'm wondering, like, how something could have gone wrong so fast with that thing? And who is responsible? I don't mean like somebody who is responsible in administration. But, you know, like, how did we manage to buy a steam room from a company that has totally failed to the point where we basically have to buy a new one already? If anyone could, you know, shed some light on that, that'd be great.
Through the chair, Counselor Montgomery, we, I can't speak to the specifics of the construction. You know, where why it was rewarded to company X or Y. All I can tell you is you're right, there has been significant failure with that that amenity. We've had water that's got behind tiles, got into the electrical system. And so you're right in terms of the hours that it's been utilized. But in order to make it functional again, you're right, we're looking at a potential complete redo.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mark. And it's, yeah, it's 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 such a shame, right? But, yeah, we have to kind of, it's, yeah, it's either like we just have a non-functioning steam room, or we have to go and dump like a ton of money into it, right? And neither of those is a good option.
Can I ask a question about that, Counselor Montgomery, through the chair? Mark, do you see that as being systemic of a bigger problem? The fact that we are almost bound by these municipal guidelines that force us to choose the bottom, you know, the, well, we're we're almost pushed to choose the least expensive option in many cases. And so sometimes, like with with regards to having to retile the pool because the grout wasn't done properly, and now the steam room, like, is that something? and now the steam room, like, is that something that maybe we should look at? Or even talk to AUMA or, am I on the right track or am I misinterpreting what's happening?
Through the chair, I think there's, the, the failures with the steam room are, are, were done by some poor construction, in my opinion, based on the research we have there. We, the companies that we contracted out probably weren't, weren't the best. I believe that project was, was property, was project managed through a third party. So in that element of it, if we, if we chose to go with a different type of, like a dry sauna versus a wet sauna, that may change the, the cost associated with that. In terms of retiling of, of the grout and, and things like that, you're, whenever you have a facility, a rec facility, especially in the pool with high humidity, there's, there's a lot of things that goes, that goes wrong in those, in those places over time. And some things are bound by, by Life Saving Society, which we just recently completed an audit and successfully passed, that they make recommendations, but these are recommendations more often than not. They're not a, there's no governing body when it comes to pools and things like that. So we try to do our best to, to do preventative maintenance. And sometimes that is costly with these types of facilities.
So when you're doing a tender to different businesses or contractors for the work, are you not bound by our rules that say that you have to choose the lowest bid?
Through, through the chair, that price is definitely a factor in that, but it's not the, the sole factor. We, sometimes, it's, it's how we, how we rate it. The, the delivery of the services based on our timelines, excuse me. For example, what we recently did with our family center roof, we, we had to select a vendor that wasn't the most expensive, that wasn't the least expensive, that, that, that could deliver it as, as per we, when we needed it done. So that was the deciding factor in, in that, in that project. For the pool and for the steam room, like I said, I wasn't part of the town at that time. So, but our goal is not always just to save money, but it's a number of factors in that.
Is there a preferred list of contractors and kind of a, a list that municipalities also circulate of ones to kind of stay away from?
With, with a project like this, we always go to tender and, and you, sometimes we, often we ask for like testimonials type of thing. A lot of our associations, whether it's AUMA or the recreation one is AFRP, they have a list of preferred, preferred suppliers as well. And so, but ultimately, when the, when these projects go to tender, they're open, open up to everybody.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Counsel.
Yeah, and then that, that wraps up my questions. I just wanted to thank each and every one of the staff for their work on this and for all the time you take to answer my questions and to, to educate me on this stuff. And I, I truly appreciate it. So thank you very much. And I thank you to council for your time as well. And, and thank you as well, Mr. Legor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Montgomery, and thank you, Mel and Lisa, and all the staff directors. So next steps, Mr. Legor?
Mr. TD, did you want to have a recommendation presented to council tonight?
So we said at the outset that we're seeking council's endorsement of this corporate business plan and budget to recommend to the new council. So is it council's desire to rise and report tonight and do such? Is it council's desire to defer that to the fifteenth? Or is it council's desire to not make any recommendation?
Would, would there be any problem with us deferring to September fifteenth at the regular council meeting?
We can certainly bring it back. The only issue is that the cutoff for the agendas have already been passed and probably would not be included in the agenda, but would be presented as an additional amended agenda item.
Counsel, what do you think? Rise and report? Okay. Counsel Montgomery, are you comfortable with rise and report and making a motion?
To be honest, like, I don't, I don't feel comfortable. I, I'm totally fine with the operating budget. That, that's, you know, that's all well and good to me. I'm, I'm not keen on recommending the, the capital budget. As I said, like, I, there's things in there where I'm kind of looking at it and going, yeah, you can probably get by without that. So I, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I'm happy to recommend to the next council they raise taxes, first of all. I'm, I'm not happy, but, you know, I, I'm totally willing to do that. And I, I'm, you know, I'm willing to kind of justify the operating budget. I just, I, I would prefer not to, to recommend the capital budget at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Legor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The entire document will be reviewed by the new council and they will make the final decision. We're just asking for council support in principle. And let's get this forward to the next council, if we could, please. Thank you.
Is anyone prepared to make a motion and do, well, we'd have to come out of committee of the whole. Thanks, Erica.
I would move to come out of committee of the whole, Your Worship.
Thank you. We have a motion to come out of committee of the whole. All in favor? Okay, that's passed. Counsel Peterson or is anyone, Counsel Bauer?
Don't have to rise and report, I just say the motion, right?
I think you can just make a motion or do, yeah.
I move that administrat- Oh. Okay, that's not really formed in a, in a, in a recommend, it's a recommendation. Am I recommending, I'm, I'm making a motion to recommend? Okay, I've never done that. I move that I recommend administrat- I don't know how to do this. How do, can I have help?
Sorry, not a, not a problem. I would just say that council recommend.
Oh, okay, rather than administration.
Yeah.
So your recommendation is for the, accepting the corporate plan?
To, yeah, to recommend to the, to the next council to adopt in principle.
Counsel Bauer?
Yes.
Before you, before you list these off, as I said, I'm not comfortable with that kind of recommending the capital budget. But, so if, if you'd be willing in your motion to not include the capital budget as part of what we recommend, I'd, I'd be able to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Legor? Through you, Mr. Mayor. Does that mean administration goes back and does another capital budget? Or what do we do? It's, it's a future council that will deal with this. We're just putting this budget forward to a future council. Whether we agree or disagree is really irrelevant. I'm sorry, I don't want to make light of that. But it's the next council that will decide whether it's relevant and it should be approved or not. So we should present the package as a whole. That's what was presented to you. You're just passing it on to the next council.
Well, I totally agree that it's, it's not, it's not our decision to pass this budget or not. So the recommendation is kind of moot. I just thought, since we're, you know, moving to the point of making a recommendation, we might as well be able to stand behind the things we're recommending. As I said, it's, I, I recognize it's the next council that, that will be deciding this finally, so I just.
Counsel Bauer, do you have a motion that you're comfortable presenting?
I move that the corporate business plan, the 2022 to 2024 draft operating budget, 2022 to 2026 capital budget and long-term financial plan be reviewed, be recommended for council for future consideration.
Okay, if the wording sounds palatable, Kara, are we recommending it to the incoming council? Would that help with wording? She's, future council? Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed? And it's passed. Counsel Peterson?
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Motion is carried. I got your vote in too, Mark. Mark, you make my day all the time.